Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, November 17th, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker? Mr. -- oh, wait, this is an old one. It has David Friedman's name on it.
Wow.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
Here.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We begin this evening with the public hearing for the conditional use permit request for home occupation 1246 Waldo Way. The applicant please come forward, name and address, and a presentation for the community as to what you're asking for this evening.
Yes, my name is Laura Shu. My address is 1246 Waldo Way, Twinsburg, Ohio. I am looking to use my home for part-time massage therapy services. I recently completed a program at Tri-C last August, and I'm certified by the State Medical Board. And I work full-time someplace else, so I would just like to use the space maybe two evenings and Saturdays during the week. Is there anything else?
Anything else you'd like to share? Now's your opportunity.
Um, I don't think I can think of anything.
All right, thank you. It's an opportunity for members of the community to come forward and speak on this item. If you have anything to say, whether it's for, in favor or opposed to this, now is your opportunity to speak. Anyone come forward? Seeing no one, the public hearing will now be closed. If you could come back actually up to the podium because we're in the work session, and this is the first item on the agenda for the work session.
Okay.
I think that everything was pretty well outlined in the planner's report. It had the conditional use permit application, and all the items for consideration were all answered and addressed, but I had no comments or questions. Ed, did you have anything?
No, sir.
Steve?
No, I think I commend you for actually coming forward and actually getting conditional use permit because I'm sure we have some instances out there that aren't documented, but wish you well in your business endeavor.
Thank you.
I echo Steve's appreciation for bringing it to us, and it seems like it's not going to affect the neighbors or area, so I'm all in support of it.
Thank you.
Scott, anything?
Nothing additional. Wish you the best in your endeavors.
Mayor, anything on this?
Nothing on this, thank you.
Lynn, anything else that the planning commission should take into consideration?
I'm with you guys. This is really straightforward. There's plenty of parking space in the driveway. The applicant has done a nice job of really being specific about anticipated hours of operation, and yeah, good on you. The day she turned it in, my neck was killing me.
What? First customer.
It seemed like a really good idea.
All right, then I think we're good for the work session. Do we have any issue if we move item number two in the work session into the regular meeting agenda? That way we can go through this, and this big share of the applicant won't have to stay around unless they want to. Does everyone agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. Then we're going to go into the regular meeting portion of this evening's agenda, and we'll be with you in just one moment back on this. First item is the approval of the October 20th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Is there any comments or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, it'll be accepted as submitted. Second item is public participation, opportunity for members of the community to address planning commission on any topic. If anyone would like to come forward and speak, now is your opportunity. Name and address, please.
Jane Wise, 2586 Maple Drive, Twinsburg. And I would just like to say Maple Drive residents are definitely very interested in what the downtown planning commission is working on, the downtown redevelopment, and very interested in communication and resident input on that. Last, honestly, the last I knew of it was the 2014 when they had the comprehensive plan. My husband and I and our son came and saw the great, the plans that were laid out, and we've never heard anything about it since then. Now we know properties are for sale on 82, and so it seems like the speed is picking up, and we just want to know that that's still the plan, if there's room for adaptation, what the input is from the community, to get input to actually before it's developed. So concerned residents are interested in what you're doing tonight and ongoing. Thank you.
Well, we're happy to have you here to see what's going on. Obviously, it's open for all members of the community to come forward, and we hope so. This is the first time that planning commission is seeing what's being discussed for this, so you're fresh with us. Obviously, this is going to be a process. This isn't something that's just steamrolling through because it's important, and there's a lot involved in doing so. Lynn, is there anything else that you could share about this or the process?
I guess in terms of what I heard that you touched on, that tonight's proposal doesn't involve East Aurora Road specifically.
Well, we are concerned about the whole downtown, obviously.
I understand.
Right there, so just to want you to know, there are residents who are concerned that want to be communicated with and to have input on it.
Understand.
Not knowing what the process is.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Now's the opportunity to address planning commission. All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the third item, which is the conditional use permit. You can come back up to the podium. And anything else you'd like to share regarding your request for planning commission this evening?
I do not have anything else.
No? Okay. Anything else, Ed?
No, sir.
Steve?
Nope.
Craig?
No.
Like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant, along with the submitted conditional use request and application for Laura Shu, Ph.D., LMT, 1246 Waldo Way, permanent parcel number 6404618, dated October 30th, 2025, I move that planning commission recommend to City Council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a licensed massage therapy home occupation at 1246 Waldo Way.
No second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
So for all this is a recommendation to City Council, while they will have the final say on your request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next item would be the concept plan for the downtown redevelopment site. Applicant could please come forward, and name, address, and what we're looking at this evening.
All right.
Lynn, is what we're looking at also going to be coming up on the monitors?
Yeah, it'll be easier for you to see here.
We do have here. I want to make sure that the community has, can see if you need it to orient. But if everything's going to be up on the --
Will it show up there? Well, I think it's going to show up on the monitors as well. If not, we'll reorient it so that you can see.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, my name is Ryan Toronto. Actually, live in Aurora, 650 South Sussex Court in Aurora, Ohio. My family is from the Twinsburg area, my wife's family to be exact, and have been a Twinsburg advocate for many, many years now. Plus, I'm married to my wife for 20 years now, so I kind of have to, kind of have to like Twinsburg no matter what, right? I met, had the great fortune of meeting Rebecca not so long ago, and Ian Jones, who's with me here, who's from Avid Architects, formerly MPG Architects, brought me the opportunity because he was actually on your working committee for the downtown rezoning district referendum vote that you all did, and I think you did that pro bono to help out with the overall city planning and so forth. So in any event, Ian knew about the opportunity, introduced me to Rebecca, and we were able to come up with a concept plan specific to what we think the rezoning was done for, and I know there was a lot of time and effort and hard work put into that rezoning. So what I thought to do today was go through the presentation that we had previously given on a couple of different occasions now, and talk about what we have planned for the sites in particular, and then go through any comments or questions that you all have. I'll talk a little bit about my company, my development company as well, just to make sure you all understand our experience and so forth. So we have come up with a name, Twins Crossing District. Am I doing something wrong, Rebecca? There goes, sorry. Just to give you a quick background on my company, so I founded Terra Real Estate Enterprises some time ago now, a little over six years ago now. My primary background is in the finance world. I've become, for lack of a better word, and I have the gray hairs to show it, a structured finance person. And I started off in banking and predominantly doing real estate finance for investment properties, and then moved slowly but surely into real estate development. The first property that I bought was actually located across from the Old Massara's where we bought a couple of condos and rehabbed them. They were in foreclosure, and eventually rented them out and sold them. So I kind of started really from the bare bones of real estate. So over that time, my company has done almost a little over $1.2 billion of real estate development and finance. We own properties currently in Rocky River, Parma, Parma Heights, Hiram, Ohio. We own a property down in Calabash, North Carolina, which is near Myrtle Beach, and it's predominantly multifamily. The project that we have in Rocky River is sort of a landmark project for us in the sense that it took some time to get it rezoned, entitled, and built. It's 71 units. It's going to open here in January, and we're expecting nothing but good things from that. So like I said, my background is primarily in the finance side, and we've migrated into, or I have migrated rather, into the development. So we have a full-scale property management company, development company, finance company, but we do outsource a lot of our work to the legal professionals and obviously the architects and engineers. And we've worked with Ian's group on a number of projects that have turned out real well. So that's a quick background on us, and let me get this thing working here. I'm sorry. Okay. So the Twins Crossing District, and I think it's probably easier just to go through the site plan. I can always flip back to this in a minute, but I think the site plan is a little bit easier to see. Just having a little connectivity issue here.
I like to just hit all the buttons.
Yeah, it's a lot of them. There we go. So if you do have the printout in front of you, I'll kind of go through it in color because I think that's probably the easiest way to do it. And then if you guys have any specific questions, this would just be a great time to ask anything. I'm sure there'll be more along the way. So as you all know, the city owns portions, and the CIC owns portions of the above land. The other landowner is Regis and Kelly Brown. We have a letter of intent with Regis and Kelly that hopefully turns into a full signed purchase agreement here within the next week or so. We're on the final version of negotiating that. And the idea here was to create a development that fits within the zoning that you all did, but also complements a lot of what was happening on the site previous to the redevelopment. So it's kind of starting from the green and then working our way toward Route 91. The plan here is to acquire the city's parcel as well as Regis's parcel, create a park up, for lack of a better word, that I'll use in the meantime, and then that park would be given back to the city for use by the residents, including the roads and roadways within the project. Those will be given back to the city to be maintained. And the idea with the park is to create a bike and hike trail, a sledding hill, because I know that the majority of the residents really like the sledding hill that's there currently. I used to take my kids there many years ago now, and a splash pad along with pickleball courts, as well as a pavilion area that has a playground and amphitheater. So we think that those will be net huge benefits to the city. The cost of that part of the project is somewhere in the $6 to $7 million range. We're still pricing and bidding all of that out, and we do think it will complement the overall site altogether. The blocks kind of sort toward the middle of the page that are in, would you say that's orange, Ian, I think, orange-ish color, will be two-story townhome products. You've probably seen something similar if you've been down to Columbus. Ian, if you want to throw up the renderings of that, those are three-story buildings. I don't think we could find any two-story. So I think they'll look very similar to brownstone slash townhomes that you've probably seen, like I said, in Columbus and/or New York. The Chelsea area has a lot of that. So we do target these to be occupied by probably empty nester types, folks that don't want a lot of maintenance. Each unit will have its own garage, two-car parking garage. They'll have parking on the street, although it's kind of hard to see from the initial drawing that we, site plan that we have up there. And it does spectacular views of the park area. As you all probably know, the grade of that sort of goes up toward, from the baseball field to where those orange blocks are drawn today. So that'll be very, very cool views of the overall development. Kind of moving again toward Route 91, the idea is to have really a multifamily buildings on either side of that main road coming off of the roundabout, and I'll touch on that in a second. The roundabout would lead into the project, and on either side, we'd have retail on your left-hand side and retail on your right-hand side. We are targeting about 15,000 square feet of retail, restaurants, fitness studios, things of that nature, probably some complementary uses to the overall development, given that there'll be quite a few residents living on the property. So we are looking at four stories of multifamily above, and then toward kind of the post office area in the pink block is a 25,000 square foot block for a grocer. There's a couple of different grocers that we think are targeted and good uses for that particular portion of the site, and we're very confident that we will execute a long-term lease with a good national grocer that'll complement the other grocers here in town. The idea for the roundabout, noting that there's probably some initial pushback on those when you all installed them down 91 years ago, I do think that that roundabout would create a good traffic flow, given that there's two traffic lights, obviously at Route 91 and 82, and then one toward where the entrance where the Chipotle and Dairy Queen is. So the idea with that roundabout is to create really good traffic flow, as well as a stopping point that we think will be helpful to the retailers and healthy for the retailers for their long-term success on the project. So overall, we think that everything meets the current building and zoning code. Ian Patel has elaborate experience in doing so. Hopefully, we've touched on everything with respect to that, but obviously we're open to any commentary, any questions on that. I really didn't have a lot else to go into detail on because I figured there would be a lot of questions specific to the multifamily, the rendering that Ian brought here. That's literally the building that I'm building in Rocky River, and we think that the fit and finish of the multi-story building that'll have the retail on the ground for will look a lot like that at the end of the day. Rocky River was very, very, very particular as to how the site would look and how the building would look, and it took me three and a half years to get that rezoned and entitled and eventually built here. So I'm growing gray hairs by the day on that one in particular. I did have a construction timeline here. This will click over in a second. The construction timeline was really, we were hoping to close on everything the first quarter of next year. There's different types of bond financing that we would be using to get the project built. As you all probably know, with interest rates being what they are, costs being what they are, labor costs being what they are, it's very difficult to build any new construction project right now. So we are looking at a number of different incentive programs that we're confident that we'll get in order to make the project a success from a financing standpoint. So that's my last slide, if I can get this to click over, but I'm not sure that I can.
Scan up the button.
There it is. So that's just a pretty rudimentary and simple timeline. So if we were to start in March of this, March, April of this coming year, 2026, it'll take a good 24 months to build everything out, probably another 12 months to get all the tenants in and stabilized. And our plan is to hold it for the long term. Any of the assets that I own, they're long-term holds that I would hope to give to my kids and who would take on the legacy of my business as well. So with that, that's pretty much the presentation. Would be glad to answer questions. Ian came along as well, so any direct technical questions, he's your guy.
Thank you. Can you pop that back to the site plan?
Sure.
You spoke of the yellow for residential, and it says 2, 3, and 4, and you chose the mixed use in the purple. Is it, is it mixed use, you know, retail, commercial on the first floor of that entire building and residential?
Yeah.
2 through 4?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, purple is where the retail section would be on the first floor, and then yellow would be across all the upper floors.
So where it's yellow, that's also residential on the first floor?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not all?
On the very last building to the right, yeah.
Yeah, I see you have the purple-yellow combination, and it says yellow, it says floors 2, 3, and 4, but I was wondering what's happening on the first floor of the yellow, and you're saying that it's actually residential where it's yellow and it's commercial retail works purple?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, you got it.
And not to interrupt, to address the retail question so we're all on the same page, we really tried hard to limit the amount of retail going on the site just to make sure that we're putting the right amount of tenants there that will have long-term success. I think the retail world is difficult right now, just in general, and we could probably sign leases for 50,000 square feet of retail tenants, but I want them to, long-term, be very successful, so we're trying to limit the amount of it.
Well, we want the right mix as well, not just to serve the people that are going to be living in and developing, but to serve the whole community.
Sure.
There's some great need for some higher-end, but restaurant, bar types of uses would be nice to see added in there.
Sure.
You know, just from a planning and zoning, and looking at the planning, going to have a very interesting time getting trucks in and out of that truck dump for that grocery store, based on what at least I'm looking at right now.
Yeah.
Assuming you're going to have some summits, I'm assuming you will.
Right.
But that's just a very general thing that could truly be worked out. Overall, I think it looks really nice. I think the park area is a critical component, creating spaces for the community to gather who then can hopefully work their way to those purple spaces and utilize them. I don't see that baseball diamond surviving there. I hope it doesn't. I mean, I support athletics like crazy in our community, but I could see a lot better use improving that sled hill and creating some great outdoor spaces for the community to use year-round would be very nice. And the trail, I mean, yeah, it's going right in the perfect direction. So those are my first comments off the top. Ed?
No, I'm just taking it in for a minute, so.
Yeah, there's a lot to take down. It's okay, keeps absorbing, we can come back. Steve, any comments or questions?
I think it's a great, it's a great plan to start with. I think the, I think the views will be actually pretty phenomenal for some of those units down there.
Agreed.
Thank you for preserving the sled hill. I spilled enough blood on that sled hill over my ears. I'm happy to see it stay. It's always been a gathering spot for the community through the years, all the years I've grown up here. But I think overall, I think this is a great plan to start with. I think that's what the downtown needs, is something like this, and I'm happy to see it. I've seen some of the projects in Columbus, my daughter lives in Columbus, so, and people just seem to thrive with the neighborhood environment down there. So hopefully, the mix of retail with the residential is complementary, and we can always use another grocery store for sure, so.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I'm just excited to see something brought to us. You know, it's been many years, living here for 25 years, been talking about development in downtown, and you know, I'm hopeful this can make it to the end and actually be completed. The park space is phenomenal, and I'm really glad you incorporate that into the design, you know, and opening it up to the river, and it'll be a nice area to gather. You know, I echo, you know, some of the restaurant, bar, brewery type of stuff. That's what I love to have here. I travel out of Twinsburg for that. I'd rather stay here in Twinsburg for that personally, but that's just my personal opinion. You know, I hope this can stem further development in that whole area because this is just one piece. There's a lot of, you know, areas that can be further developed, but I'm looking forward to this.
Great, thank you. Lynn, anything else that you would?
We would hope that the bike and hike multipurpose trail could go all the way through to Creek Side, something that we'll work on as the project develops.
Absolutely.
Looks like the post office does use the parking at the rear building, but that doesn't mean that there isn't some way to enhance the connectivity and get on the way to Creek Side.
Does the driveway that's shown coming out of the southeast corner going behind the post office area, is that, is there paving in that area now?
There's a parking lot there, but I don't think it's that, well, this is a, this is wishful think, this is
Of course.
Wishful thinking right now, but.
But would they, the post office wouldn't lose any parking area if that road went in, or do we?
I think they would.
They might, okay.
Doesn't mean that there isn't ample parking on the site.
Sure.
They are ironically using, it looks to me like they use that area now.
Okay.
That would be one, in terms of creating that connectivity, we'd like to see that. The engineer supported the roundabout, but not necessarily as standalone. It may not function properly without another roundabout.
Other ends.
So that's another.
Well, I have always been a proponent of the roundabout. I'm against people who don't know how to drive now, but I think the roundabout itself is a, I mean, they've been in Europe and forever. I mean, we've seen them when we've traveled. It took a long time to get them here, and I could see how traffic is flowing like it should, and then you get to a stoplight a few hundred feet away. But I like the idea, I mean, it looks, on paper, it looks so nice as a focal point and an entry into the, into the development, and would help with that flow.
We'd like to tie in the rest of the frontages, if nothing else, with wider sidewalks and streetscaping to the East Aurora Road frontage and 91 frontage that are part of this project. So those are just some things looking forward, connectivity of the trail, enhancing the amenities at the street of the parcels that aren't part of this project, and how could we, what could we do to have this roundabout that would make sense? We're very supportive of the public roadway through the property.
The city is fine with taking that back and making it city street for us to maintain.
Yeah, the engineer strongly supports the ability to make a right-hand, for right-hand turners to go ahead and use that section, whether they're at 91, because they really are going through the East Aurora Road, or if they're visiting the site. And beyond that, the uses and parking and building the mansions all are in compliance with the downtown district standards at this point.
So that was a question for the 154 parking spots, that would be really primary for the, if you're wanting to use to park, that's where you would park?
Well, Well, I don't know. I interpreted that to mean, that would, those spots would primarily support the grocer.
Yeah, I guess that leads to the question, is, is this parking based on a totally square footage of the uses, or is there additional parking spaces that would be able to be supplemented to handle if they were coming to use the park?
Yeah, so right now, the, the calculation is based on just the uses, but we designed a lot opposite the grocer to face the park, so, you know, those, those rear spaces that tend to not be used at a grocer, you know, they would be the kind of park amenity, parking. And then, yeah, the, the units kind of dictate the parking count for the multifamily component, the, the square footage dictates the, the parking amount for the retail.
So I'm sorry, say that again, so this would, it is, it's not taking into consideration park usage, or it is?
It is not.
It is not.
So I, I don't know if the zoning code has a...
It doesn't.
A way to calculate that.
Yeah.
It's just whether or not there'd be extra spaces beyond what the code requires for the, for the square footage of the uses. Like I said, a lot of times, the grocery store has got more parking than it needs. Like you said, those faraway spaces you see are empty in a lot of cases. Fortunately, they're near the pickleball courts in the other area. I keep trying to envision in my mind what it would look like if there was a little, a little spot down at the bottom of the hill, kind of where there is now, for the supports of baseball diamonds, but I don't know if it's worth giving up the green space to throw in a, a little paved area there.
Yeah.
If you're coming to the park, you can walk a little bit, because you're coming to the park.
Good boy.
But it's just something that, to think about.
Yeah, if Bush came to shove and that had happened, the parking would be permissible in this legislature preparing area, whatever, however you want to characterize it.
Yeah.
So that being said, we might want to consider not having the baseball field there.
Yeah, I don't think any, I think the baseball field was included just because it exists. I don't know that that really...
Yeah, we're not married to it. It was something that's there now. I think some of, maybe it's 50/50 on who likes it and who doesn't, but...
I, I think that we've expanded some of our facilities, and I think this is, it's kind of, it's on its own island out there.
Yeah.
But if, moving forward with this plan, I don't think we have parking to support it. So I would, I would say let's redevelop it and make it more park space, and...
Agreed.
You know, I think there's better uses for it, even if we add some additional parking down there. If the, if the bike trail's going through there, there's a perfect trailhead parking place there. So just, just a thought.
The multifamily in yellow is all surface parking, there is no garage parking for those units?
Correct.
Right.
And then speak to, if you could, sort of hash yellow components.
The tunnel area, yeah. So as Lynn was pointing out, in between the two yellow buildings to the rightmost side of the, of the plan, Ian came up with a great design where in between there would be a tunnel for the cars to drive through, and a, and sort of an awning or a covering over that. We'll get you some more detail on it, it's very conceptual right now.
Was the ideal that there could be entrances into the building?
Exactly.
So you have covered, instead of a port horse sticking out somewhere.
Correct, yep. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Because it never rains or snows.
Not in northeast Ohio.
Well, traffic, what do we envision? That is one of my commutes to, one of my places, is down Aurora Road, south on 91, and... Right. Sometimes it's bad now. Yeah. What do we envision it to be? It's a great question. We have to get a traffic study done, so a couple of different reasons, obviously, to, to do the roundabout and determine if, if there, if this was to move forward, do we do a traffic light instead of a roundabout? I think the roundabout makes the most sense to me, but that doesn't mean I'm right about it. So we need to do a traffic study to answer it, but you're right, I mean, that, that area is something we have to consider and, and deal with accordingly. But in, in my opinion, that's probably a good way to do it, because it keeps the traffic moving, but we'll have to... Yeah, when I leave sometime, sometimes it's, the lights are backed up all the way to Aurora. Right, right, yeah. Okay, probably more to come on that.
The road cutting through the development being a city road will help a little bit of that, but you're generating more traffic, but you're kind of trying to create a way to alleviate it at the same time. So yeah, I could definitely, definitely see that, which would also be nice for that driveway to Creekside, because then you could come out the back way and get out to a light.
Correct.
Turn left, head south if needed to, down...
Correct.
Down 91.
I could see speed bumps coming. That's the, be the next question.
Any other comments or questions from the planning commissioners, Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to share with us on this?
I would love to. Yeah, and you know, this is probably the, in my years, there's been at least two, if not three other plans that I've seen for this area. And truthfully, when Ryan came along with his plan, this one seemed to make the most sense. He added the component of the park area down below the hill in that area there. And speaking of the ball field, the city's not married to that ball field either, so we would have no, there'd be no heartbreak for us if, if that ball field went away. Some are saying that I need to put a ball field somewhere else if that goes away, but that's for another conversation. But yeah, I, I think it, I think it's a great component with the, with the mixed use, of course, is what, what we were looking for there, with the living spaces and with the, the retail. And I really believe that it adds to what we've been looking for in our downtown area. You know, for, as most of you know, I've been around here now in Twinsburg on city council for 20 years, and, and now in this office, and, you know, I've always said that Twinsburg is a drive-by city, and that's why, you know, we have, we have a nice, we have a nice downtown now. However, I think we're gonna have a beautiful downtown when we can get some of these projects completed, and that includes what the township is doing in the center of the square, and then what we are proposing for some of the outlying buildings, some facade improvements, and then our beautification program coming down into, down 82 into the square. And this project really lends to, to what we're looking for, and I think that it's going to bring people to our downtown. And I really like the component of the, of the walkway going from, you know, from Ravenna Road there or 82 down to Creekside. I think that that's a nice component. So I think this is a, it's really workable, Ryan, and I, you know, applaud you for bringing this to us. And this is something that I've seen that all of us most, for the most part, have gotten behind this, this project, and would like to see happen. So I think it's a good use of that space, and again, to bring people into our downtown area to make it more vibrant, more usable, and as you, as some of you know that have been around a while, we've had various restaurants down there, the last one being Cero's Italian Restaurant where Starbucks is now, that didn't last there. And there's been other things in, in the plazas there that haven't lasted. We just, it's never been a destination. Twinsburg wasn't a destination. And I think that, I'm not looking to make it, you know, any one of the, the big Hudson's or Chagrin Falls, we're never gonna be that, and, and we don't want to be that. But we want to be a destination for people to come in and to be able to come to their downtown and be able to walk around a little bit. And, and I love the, the component of the sledding hill. In the other projects that I've seen, the sledding hill is gone, it was going away. And that was mostly gonna all be developed there, there was no park area. And so I really love that, that park component and, and what he's put into it. And I think he put a lot of thought into it, so thank you very much. And I, I think it's something that our, our community needs, and I think it really fits into, into the plan. I think it's gonna be really nice. So I hope, I hope you guys like it and, and that it works out in the long run. I hope that we can make this happen.
Thank you.
Sure.
So Lynn, how is, is this project moving forward from the aspect of having the community see what's going on now, having the ability to make comments for consideration by planning commission at some point, I'm sure, A or B, when the designs start to happen? I mean, everybody has an opinion. But, you know, how, how does this move forward, you know, in the next step, and, and again, making the community aware and giving them those opportunities to see and thought?
So before we get to the serious community input portion of the process, we have a development agreement, ironing out finances with the schools, a couple, a couple steps to get up before we would have something concrete to share with the public. And so I think when we're ready to do that, when the team's ready to do that, we'll just have a special, we'll just have a special planning session, and we'll get the word out to the public.
Is it, is it worth making even this available to them to see, or you think, because anybody could have come here, I mean, is that premature to have it up on the website, or...
What we, what planning and zoning and economic development had, did for the zoning code update was to create a project page on our Together Twinsburg software product. And right now, we're starting, we're kicking off a streetscape project, and so we're starting to put information on Together Twinsburg, a project page on that software. So I, I think maybe we do the same for this project. We create a page that has everything you ever wanted to know about the project on it, and we do that in addition to having public meetings.
So you said something, kind of made me pull in something else. I think it was mentioned that Avid Architects is also working on the storefront renovation portion for the buildings that are around the square. And those, those, what they worked on were conceptual ideas. I don't know if the store owners implement them, if they're required to do the Avid Architects design concepts. My only thought and where I'm going with this is that the work that they do there architecturally blends in with what is happening on this site, so that we're not having hodgepodge. And I know it doesn't have to be the same, and we see that in many of these, a lot of times storefronts are different, specifically to give them an interesting characteristic and identity. However, if we're going Western Reserve, if you will, on one, and Contemporary on the other, that, that's not what I would want to see. We'd want to see some correlation and tie-ins. So I don't know if there's an answer to that, it's just more of a comment. Anybody?
Yeah, Rebecca, speak to your six.
And also speak to maybe creating some consistency with the streetscape.
Correct, great. So Lynn, Lynn, sorry.
You kind of dug up to the microphone there.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
So, correct, we had Avid Architect do some design renderings for properties that were right along the square, in hopes that we would do some sort of a facade improvement program. The renderings have come back, we've shared them with the property owners, and we do have two property owners that are very interested in moving forward with them. They hope to have transferred property ownership and then be getting bids in the spring, which is great. They do not have to follow to a T what was presented to them, it was just merely an idea. So sometimes it's very hard to picture what, you know, your property could look like, but we will have safeguards put in place on that. What includes the facade improvement program? Is it the back of the building? Does it include any interior work? It wouldn't be at this point, it would just be exterior. With that being said, so we do anticipate two prominent buildings along the square partaking in that program, and then we also have Environmental Design Group, which is now kicking off their, they're doing their survey work starting on December 8th. They're the Streetscape consultants. They're very much aware of that CIC facade improvement program, so they're blending that in, they're very much aware of this project. They are also very much aware of all these other projects going on, and that they do have to be compatible with each other. So we do anticipate, and we haven't, we're, it's exciting, because we haven't made it this far before, but we do anticipate a significant amount of public input in terms of surveys, where, where we can have input. So especially with those park amenities, I think we're gonna want to get feedback from the residents on what they want to see, because maybe everyone wants to see the ball field. I don't think they will, but we could be wrong. But I think that's the type of, the type of things that people want to chime in on. What do our land posts look like, but also being realistic on what can actually go there. So I agree with you, that if one of these drops in the bucket, kind of is setting the tone for the whole downtown, and we're very aware of that, and hoping to have it all work together.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that, that's, I think that's real important. I mean, I'm glad to hear that we have some property owners that are looking at that storefront renovation project, that's awesome. On the other hand, if they're gonna have it first, I don't want them being the, the horse that's leading this cart, which is much bigger than those, I mean, it's still equally important in my mind, but, you know, I mean, I'm sure you understand, everybody understands that. We want, we wanted to, to be a cohesive blend, so that the downtown really does sparkle.
Just going back to the parking again, on the first level where we have the yellow multifamily, is that, there's 69 spots. Does that include for just the families or with the retail as well? What is that, just question?
Yeah, so we, we don't have the parking designated per se, you know, this has to be residence-only, or this park's for retail. It's...
So that will include the families and retail, the 69 units, 69 spots?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure, you know, down the road, if, if it makes sense that only, you know, residents park there, and then retail parks in the southern lot, you know, that could be something that's implemented. But right now, we're just looking at the aggregate numbers across the site.
I'm just questioning how many parking spots, because for us to, you know, anybody who doesn't live right here, to utilize this, you'd have to drive to it and park, especially if you wanted to use the park. Would there be parking on that city street?
Yeah, so we would, we do show...
Okay, so we would be able to...
Yep, we do show street parking, which is along the whole public street, and so the idea of that is too full to allow you to park very close to that retail, but then also, the idea of this is to be, you know, a pedestrian-friendly type of environment, and so the, those parked cars actually create like a safe buffer for people to feel comfortable walking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's cool, yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of like Pine Crest has the...
I get it, yeah, yeah.
Parallel parking, coming back, huh?
Yeah.
Press the button.
Yeah, press the button, and the car will do it for you.
Any other comments from anybody up here on the podium? All right, so those of you who came this evening, I'm going to give you the opportunity, if anybody in the audience or members of our community have any questions or comments, come up please and give your name and address. And I remember that this is a conceptual idea, we're all seeing it for the first time, but we're happy, since you did come, I want to give you the opportunity to express yourself, so. Name and address, and...
Yes, I'm Audrey Cansler, 2520 Maple Drive. I'm just curious about the roundabout. Where, where exactly would that be?
It's the same location as the drive that goes to the Giant Eagle right now.
Oh.
So right by UPS.
Okay, thank you. Well, oh...
South of you, south of the historical site.
Yep.
Right. Not where there's a traffic light now.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Johnson, 2618 Maple Drive. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to congratulate you, because this has been talked about for years, and I, I think that you've done a really nice job on it. I do have a question about the historic home that is called Dr. Gris' Home, reputedly on the Underground Railroad, very significant. Right now, if you take a step, you'll fall onto Route 91 so close to the street. What are your plans for that, and other, hopefully otherwise than raising it? And could that be incorporated somehow into the design of this one? And again, thank, thank you for showing us this out. You've done a great job. Could, could the audience see the, the renderings of a home?
Great, thank you. So this is gonna be a very bad answer to your, to your question. I didn't know that home was historic. Take a, have to look into that, and I'm sure Rebecca, there's probably some things we would need to deal with, because it is a historic building, and that's your wheelhouse, right?
Yeah.
So if we could keep it, we will, I'll tell you that. If, if it's something we'd have to incorporate into it, we'll do that too. So this is probably...
So this is probably, that's probably something I'd do a lot more research, to be honest with you. So I don't want to give you a bad, I don't want to give you a wrong answer or a bad answer, so.
Even for realizing
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll look into it and I'd like something we'll get back to.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else would like to have any comments at this time?
Jane Wise, 2586 Maple Drive. I just can't quite figure out where, so the roundabout is by the UPS, not where there's a light. So I'm, and so this is
Your Mr. Chicken. Yeah, here's, here's the storefront, and then Mr. Chicken. And then you start going up the hill, here's the park, and then the historical society. And then here's the UPS warehouse. And then this is that drive into Giant Eagle.
Okay, and so we stay as if this is not chicken at all. This is, okay, and then post office is there. So, okay, so this is
I don't know why. It's actually south of that house.
Right.
And then just a, so I have a question, like, I need to know what this thing
It's where Rob Velver's offices.
Yeah, so right now, we have 135 units, roughly, proposed. That's only based on square footage of the building itself, rather than like an actual floor plan. But that would mean that the residential use would require 273 parking spaces. So that's across the whole site. So, so the 135, there's 135 units in this building, this building together, estimated. And then these townhomes are 47. And so the parking demand across all of them is 273. And then across all the site, as far as different surface parking, the townhouse garages, the street parking, there's 365 total parking spaces. The retail use, so the purple and then the big grocer, that are required, the parking spaces is taken away, so.
Remember, remember that this is just the conceptual first. It's a lot, it's okay, I just
Four free cars, you can't
The grocery store needs to be redone.
Absolutely.
So, and the mayor said it a little bit earlier, I don't think that we want to make Twinsburg like a Chagrin Falls or a Pinecrest or the project in Hudson, first in Maine. But there are those types of tenants that I, that I think are needed in the sense of restaurants, restaurants with bars, a wine shop, or a wine get-together. There's a lot of really, really great tenants out there that are in Twinsburg today that we think we can relocate to the site. But we really want to make it something that's active, where not only the residents that are living on the site can use, but in addition to that, as the mayor articulated earlier, someplace people want to come to. So it'll be those, those types of tenants. And as you probably have seen over time, the retail is evolving. If you go to the movies, the movies is considerably different than it was 10 years ago. So there's a lot of new, exciting concept tenants, a lot of which I can't talk about just yet because we're under confidentiality agreements, and I just need to make sure we're sensitive to that. But it will be activating type of retail, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Again, I know this is preliminary and schematic. The townhomes, did you say that the intent was there'll be two, two car garages for them?
Yes.
And the way that it's represented now, those buildings are right on the road, there's like no driveway, so there'd be no parking in front of the garage space?
Correct, yeah, that's right.
Right.
So the townhouse, the townhouse products have like an alley, and that, that maneuverability is shared for the ones there to the east of the site. And then the ones on the west of the site, they just have, they have their own. But yeah, just to be efficient and not waste the pervious surface. So, so yeah, they would share, you know, I think they would, would highly likely not be leaving exactly at the same time.
No, no, yeah, just it, it helps with the count. If you had a guest, call my guests, in this case, their guest is using the parallel parking in front of the unit.
Correct.
To work, then that's why you don't see like a little, little guest parking lots, if you will.
Yep.
And I, and I appreciate that. Just thinking about pulling in and out of those garages with, like you said, maneuverability space. Normally, you'd have that driveway, even if it's like 20 feet.
Yeah.
Here, you're pretty much right on, so. That's all. I mean, if you've done the product and you've seen it work, then
Yeah, yeah, we've seen this work. It works in a lot of sites that, around University Circle, they kind of do that, yeah, yep.
All right, anyone else? Well, thank you very much for coming this evening and sharing this with us. I'm sure that we'll continue to think about this. If we have other comments or questions, we can share them with Lynn, we'll pass them on to you. I know this is just the start of a, of a long process, knowing the process.
Yeah.
But we appreciate it that you shared this with us this evening.
Hopefully it's not three and a half years.
What's that?
Hopefully it's not three and a half years.
I won't make it on that one. Thank you for having us, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Communications and miscellaneous. Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Steve?
Nothing.
Correct?
No, sir.
Scott?
Nothing.
Mayor, anything?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Lynn, what, what do we have coming up on the horizon, if anything that you can share with us this evening?
Nothing other than, I anticipate all of the tax amendments that we have previously discussed, if I'm not mistaken, will be set back, anything from the council.
Everything that was recommended?
Yep.
It's coming back?
Coming back. And I'm going to share with you at that point, an analysis of the charter language that relates which items go to ballot and which items not.
So some of the items that we've already discussed are not planning commission recommended types of items?
I think they are planning commission recommended.
Well, some can be approved by council, some have to go on the ballot.
Correct. I think one of these, 20, or how many ever did there were, one, I guess, on the ballot.
Okay.
So I don't know if we'll see that in December, but I, but that's all I would know right now.
Well, right now, well, I'm assuming we probably won't have a meeting in December, if that's the only item.
Exactly.
Okay, that's on the 15th is the meeting date. All right, anything else?
Yep, that is it.
Thank you.
I do have one thing. I wanted to thank Scott for his participation on the planning commission.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
A pleasure.
Yep, we appreciate it, you having, having you here and your input and helping.
Thank you.
Wish you good luck going forward.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Well said, Steve, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, anything, anyone else? I need a motion to excuse Michael from this evening's meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Sheback?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoegler?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes. In case we don't get together on the 15th, I wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season, however you celebrate, and a, you know, we don't see ya, and a happy and healthy New Year.
I can't believe it's still November.
I may not see you guys for a couple of months, so.
See you next year.
7/29 adjournment.